Good evening. I'm Rick Mason, and welcome to the December meeting of the Lake Mills Area School District. Our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Verification of meeting notice?
Sorry, I'm not on yet.
I'll look at mine.
So it was submitted, the agenda was submitted to the Lake Mills leader on November 25th, and at that time it was also posted at the library, the Lake Mills Post Office, and the Bank of Lake Mills, as well as placed on the district website.
Thank you. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Could we stand and do the pledge allegiance, please?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Don Delaney, here. Rachel Davies.
Here.
Robert Temprio.
Here.
David Radell.
Here.
Richard Mason.
Here. Any agenda revisions? Could we have approval then, please?
I'll move approval of the agenda as printed. Second.
Moving second to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, then that motion carries. Board reports. The first report is the update on the district, and the search for the district administrator. And at this point, the vacancy is closed, and we've received all the applications so far. And so far, last count was 22, applied for the district administrator position. We've completed a leadership profile based on seven community input, and those seven included teachers, community, and a lot of online responses from the community and teachers, and so on. And out of those, we listed the strengths, and one of the big strengths, which is not surprising, is facilities. And there were a number of other strengths, the teaching staff that we have, the students, the interaction of the students, and so on, extracurricular activities. This complete form, you can see, the complete summary, you can see on the district website. So I listed 18 strengths, and there were some areas for improvement. Most notably, one was mental health, that continues to be a concern of everybody. And there were 15 areas for improvement, and then 33 traits desired for, to look for in a new district administrator. And they were pretty good. You know, visibility in the community was high in the list, a good communicator, trustworthy, you know, supporter of Lake Mills community, as well as the school district, good listener, integrity, honesty, things like that. But you can read the entire report online. So, the next area is Mr. Temprio, facilities update.
Well, this evening, prior to this meeting, the board had an opportunity to tour the high school, to look at the areas that have been remodeled, as well as the addition to the building, looking at those remodeled areas that were completed for the fall semester, as well as those that will be completed for the beginning of the second semester. And I think that the board is pretty impressed with what we saw touring that. It's still a little dusty in places, but we're pretty confident that it'll be ready for our students mid-January. Furniture is expected in about a week and a half, with any luck, that'll actually happen, and stuff will get placed in the new spaces, so.
Thank you. Dr. Delaney, correspondence?
I'm going to correspondence first. We received three items this month. The first was from the FFA Alumni Organization thanking the district for allowing them to put on the Lake Mills Farewell Campus Field Tailgate on October 11th. The event raised over $1,000 to be used towards scholarships and other activities of the Lake Mills FFA students and the Lake Mills High School, or the students at the high school. A second was a note of thanks from Beth Denzine and family for the floral arrangement sent on behalf of the district in memory of Beth's father, Bradford Guile. And third, from another note from Melissa Brown, thanking the district for the plant in memory of her mother and the time needed to be with her family during this difficult time.
Good, thank you. And then we have an oath of office for our student representative. Dr. Delaney will conduct that.
All right. So I'm going to have you two, is raise your right hand, and then you can just read.
I, Camden Schultz, who has been duly appointed to the Board of Education of the Lake Mills Area School District, but have not yet entered upon the duties thereof, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Wisconsin, and will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations.
All right, congratulations, Camden. Now we're going to put you to work, and give you a report on the high school.
As the holiday season draws near, the high school is a very busy place. John Wilkie won co-conference Player of the Year and received a spot on the all-state team for soccer. Winter sports are also starting to ramp up. The girls' basketball team is currently undefeated, while the boys' team is 3-1. Juliana Wagner is up for Player of the Week for girls' basketball. The wrestling team's first home meet is tomorrow night against Clinton. The band and orchestra are having their winter concert this Thursday at 7:00 PM at the high school auditorium. Six FFA members attended the National Leadership Convention in Wisconsin Dells on November 15th and 16th, along with 1,000 other members and advisors from around the state. The musical Year in Town was also a great success, with many of the leads and supports getting nominated for Jerry Awards. Also, this Saturday, the Optimist Club will be wrapping presents for the Christmas neighbors at the Lake Mills Moravian Church. Thank you.
Thank you, Camden. Now, administrative reports. Mrs. Thompson, elementary principal, and curriculum.
The updates from the elementary school. This past month, we had our annual safety, school safety drill. The students and staff did a great job. There are a couple of things that came up that allowed us to have some conversations about different scenarios that might happen, so it was a great learning opportunity for us. This past month, we also had our parent-teacher conferences. It was great to see so many of our families in the building, talking with teachers about the great things that our students are doing. Our report cards have been posted on Family Access, so make sure families, you go in, log into Skyward and Family Access to see your child's report card. And finally, tomorrow is our winter concert. We have a 1:00 showing during the school day and 6:00 in the evening. And then for the curriculum director report, I have an annual assessment review that I provided for you. This is to look over the data within our district and school report cards. So areas of focus that are reported on the district and school report cards are student achievement, and that looks at English Language Arts and math, and those are calculated through the Ford Exam, the ASPIRE testing, and ACT, starting in 3rd grade up through the high school level. Then we look at district and school growth, closing gaps, and then on-track and post-secondary readiness, and that area is looking at graduation rate, attendance rate, 3rd grade ELA achievement, and 8th grade math achievement. So it is noteworthy that those two assessments, the 3rd grade ELA and 8th grade math, are calculated twice within the district and school report card, I should say, the district report card. So if you look at our district report card this year, we did really well. All of our report cards this year, we exceed expectations. At the district level, one point that is noteworthy is the district growth. We have increased in that area 5.7 points. And as you look at the elementary school report card, you also see that that area for school growth is the same, that we have increased 5.7 points. So that is showing that all of the work that we're doing within our curricular areas is promoting the growth that we are intending. The high school report card, I'm sorry, the middle school report card shows a growth score of 4.5 points in closing gaps. You've heard Mrs. Bauer talk the last, over the last couple of years, that they've really focused their efforts and intentions on closing gaps for some of their marginalized subgroups of students, and we can see that paying off also in the school report card. And then finally, our high school report card. This is very different than in years past. So for the first time, the ASPIRE assessment is calculated into the high school school report card, as well as school growth. That hasn't been calculated in the past, just because of the data, the assessment data that they were using before adding in the ASPIRE assessment. So their overall score is 82.5, and that's a 10.3 point increase for our high school, which is really, really good. And talking to my colleagues in other school districts, this is a big jump that other schools may not have seen. Student achievement, they increased their score by 6.7 points, and then closing gaps, 18.6 point increase from last year to this year. So really great things across the board for all of the schools, as well as for the district. So our next step, which you've already heard about in our school improvement plans, we've implemented iReady reading instruction in grades 2nd grade through 8th grade to focus on phonics, vocabulary, and grammar. So that's a nice way for us to fill some of the gap areas that we've been seeing on our assessment data. We've implemented phonics units of study in grades K, kindergarten, 1st, and 2nd grades, which we are seeing at the elementary school are getting really great results for our students, again, filling in some of those gaps that we've seen were there, and now we've been able to do something about them. Our high school departments are analyzing their student data in order to provide remediation as needed, and they've also implemented the ACT Method Test Prep, which is a 20-week course beginning in October. So those are some of the things that are happening in our schools that will directly help to impact our student achievement data. And then how do we compare? This is just some kind of fun facts to think about. I was able to take the information off of the DPI website of the 419 schools that received a district report card, and as I looked at all of those and where we match up, where we line up, we're 57th on the list of 419 school districts. Within CISA II, we are 3rd out of 45. Ahead of us is Wanakee and Middleton Cross Plains. Looking at the schools with similar demographics to ours, so I was able to take the list and look at enrollment size, so I did enrollment size of about 1,000 students to 2,000 students, and within that list, we're the top 7%. Doing the same with economically disadvantaged students, we're in the top 12%, and with students with disabilities, we're in the top 12% as well. And then I just provided for you a map of what CISA II is. We are in a very large region, so it goes all the way from Kenosha County over to Monroe, up to Wisconsin Heights, and then over to Watertown. Any questions?
Questions? Okay, that was very well done, the report. And congratulations to the entire staff.
Right.
Wait, don't go away yet. Congratulations to the entire staff for a job well done. And is it true that at the high school level, all the students take the ACT?
Yes.
Correct. And that's, that should be clear.
Yes.
To the community that everybody takes the ACT.
In the public schools.
In the public school.
There may be an exception if there's a student that's significantly, you know, disabled, and they take a different kind of test, but, right, there are other organizations that are in public schools that they do not have that same criteria of everyone taking the ACT.
Okay, now you're dismissed. Mrs. Bauer, middle school principal.
I also have our drill report for you tonight. We completed our drill in middle of, the middle of November. This year, we added what they call complications to our drill, so instead of having it predictable within core community where everyone had practiced, we did a random drill in different classrooms, which gave us a little better idea of some of the things we might need to work on. We did a great job. It was a very short drill. Everybody was very quiet, and everything went very well. We did have, for the first time though, one of the things is to have all of our doors locked, and we don't let students back into the classroom once we lock our doors, so we had to go through, because we had a student who did not get into one of the classrooms. So what do you do as a student who is locked out of classrooms in that type of drill? These are, these are, we have these nice little reports and everything, but it's some serious stuff, and we take it very seriously, and it's very important that we make sure all students are well-served, and if that situation were to happen. On a brighter note, concert, I want to, we had our concert last week, Thursday. Lots of people in attendance, many hours of beautiful music, and I want to just thank all of those involved, including our music teachers, all of those who had to help set up and take down. We had parents picking up chairs, it was great. And then all the families who attended to show their support. I'd like to thank all of those people. We have a new addition to our newsletter this month. Well, we do it every, we do it bimonthly, or biweekly, in that we had a, we've had, I've had a couple of meetings with different parents about what it looks like to have parents involved in the middle school. It's a tricky time. Parents still want to be involved, kids don't want their parents involved. So how do we, how do we communicate with parents what's going on for their students if they're not directly involved in the building all the time? And so what we did is we had a parent by the name of Karen Geschko come through the building, and she answered a few questions. What was middle school, how is middle school different now than it was when you were a child, and those types of things? And she wrote up a nice little article. It'll be part one this time in the newsletter, and then part two next time, to give parents a little deeper insight into what happens on a daily basis at the middle school level. Any questions for me?
Questions for anyone? Okay, thank you. Mr. Vogel, high school principal.
Just a couple of things as well. We had our school violence drill last month. We did a great job, according to Officer Astryke and our superintendent. One thing that we had, we had one teacher that was in semi-site in the classroom. Other than that, all our doors were locked, all students, and teachers were quiet, all the lights were out, and every single student was out of sight. So, again, congrats to my staff for taking it, taking it serious. We also did, at the end, we also talked to the students, the teachers talked to the students about, in a specific situation, kind of what we're going to do. And what we tell our kids is you listen to the adult in charge, so. Our staff also completed, as Ms. Thompson said, completed a Wise Dash workshop last November as well. They kind of revamped their site, and it's going to take, again, more than that workshop for our teachers to get familiar with it, but kind of initial start to accessing and utilizing student data to improve instruction. I also have for you our course description handbook, and it's pretty much the same from last year, just a couple of changes. We did open up for our freshman Integrated Global Science, and so that's a 912 option. Also, we made our AP courses. We added more language and more descriptive language to those courses to make sure students are aware of the rigor in our Advanced Placement courses. Excited about the new construction, staff and students. Again, like Camden said, winter sports, holiday concerts coming up. We have our band orchestra concert November 12th, our choir concert December 17th, and future freshman night next January, so pretty busy place right now.
Any questions? Has a new canine officer been up to visit yet?
He was, during the, some of the fall sports, he was up with the dog, and got to meet the community and students. He's got a couple of the football games, and maybe, maybe one soccer game, but I know he was at the playoff football games.
Has he been to middle school yet? No? Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Brown, Director of Special Education.
I just have a couple of quick things for you this evening. One thing I just wanted to let you know, that the access testing, that's for our students that are English language learners, is happening right now. The high school and middle school have just finished up on Friday, and then the elementary school is in progress, and that is in hopes to be completed before we head off for winter break. And then, also this past month, I was able to attend the Special Education Directors Conference up at the Dells for a couple days. One of the sectionals that I went to really talked about early childhood programming and being as inclusive as possible, and our team is actually already, I feel like, a couple steps ahead of that in our district, but we are going to be working with Nicole Aldworth, who is the CISA II Early Childhood Consultant, on our inclusive practices, and just where to kind of move forward on our next steps that way.
Questions? Thank you. Mrs. Brockard, Director of Business Services.
Thank you. Sorry. I'm going to highlight on a couple of things. One is about the tax levy, since recently people have been receiving their tax bills in the mail. And so I have a handout attached and at the table for you, and I have it broken out by municipalities, what their value increased, and it ranges from 1.32% up to 13.18%, but overall, all of our municipalities increased 6.04% our valuation of our properties. Our property tax went up 7.91% overall, and of that, 5.97% of, is for the referendum that we just passed. So if we didn't have that referendum, I'm thankful we do, did have it passed, but if we didn't, our levy would have gone up 1.93%. What gets complicated, and what people have been, I guess, commenting back and forth is, you know, their tax bill didn't go up 7.91%. There's a range. And what has affected that this year especially is people who live in the city. We were reassessed, and so for myself personally, my value went up 30%, and so obviously, my tax levy went up more than 7.91%. But I also believe other people didn't have as big of a change, because their valuation didn't go up as drastically as mine personally. So it's really hard to give one cut-and-dry answer for what everyone should expect their taxes to go up, because of other things, other factors that affect it. I did show at the bottom, you know, our mill rate last year was 9.16, and this year it's 9.33. And of that, 52 cents is, again, from the referendum, which was explained in our meeting in October. And just to emphasize, when we went to referendum, we talked about a 65 cent per thousand, or if you had a $100,000 home, it would have been $65. But what actually happened was, it was $52 per 100,000. So it was lower than we anticipated, but it's just, like I said, it's complicated, because there's so many factors that affect what your actual bill is. It doesn't just go up equally, like, for everyone. That's one piece.
I just asked Wendy to talk about this, because there's been talk in the community about the fact that people saw, some people saw very large increases in their taxes and assumed that it was because of the referendum. And what I really wanted Wendy to highlight is that it's much, much more complicated than that. When you are reassessed, you know, your base number that those taxes are calculated on increases well. So I needed for Wendy, and I'll say it again, that, you know, when we went to the referendum that passed, we were anticipating $65 increase per $100,000 of your assessed value. Because of our very good bond rating and our ability to borrow at a very low rate, it actually was less than we had told the electorate, and it was only $52 per 100,000. But then if your assessment went up, you know, you just can't, it's not simple math, and not everyone's assessment changed the same percent. So we're trying to address this, so if you hear any conversation in the city and you want us to talk to anyone, please have them call us. It's, you know, I feel for people who had unexpected increases, but it is related to their assessment. The information that we gave about the referendum actually came in better than anticipated, so it's not all related to the referendum. Sorry to interrupt Wendy's report.
That's fine. Are there any questions on that?
Was it also the case that the taxes aren't just the school referendum, it's other things like our contribution to MATC and a few other piles of people?
Yeah, there's the city, there's the county, or whatever municipality.
Yeah, so the school is just one part of a larger package of what the tax base is based on.
The second item I just have for you is the building level report based on our budget. I talked at Finance Committee about the annual report, the building level report. Based on our annual report, well, now it's that time of year where we had to also do it for our budget again, so it's just an attachment for you to see, just by each school, each building in our district, so.
Question?
I have a question. So, actually, more of a comment. So, but looking, looking at this, wow, it's really loud. So looking at the 2018-19 mill rate, 9.16, and then looking at 1920, 9.32, 33, right? And that's the one that we're in right now.
Correct.
Correct? That's what just came out. So the mill rate itself didn't go up very much.
Went up 1.76%, so less than 2%.
So, yeah. So it really wasn't that big of an increase?
But it's compounded by the assessment change.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other questions? Thank you, Wendy. Mrs. Astryke.
Actually, I'm just going to echo many things that were already said this evening. Congratulations to everyone on receiving exceeding expectations for the district and each of the buildings. You know, the school report card is just one measure of the great work that we do, but it is something that's very public, so we take it seriously, and there's a tremendous amount of work that goes into seeing that, seeing those numbers. And so, I mean, it's curriculum, it's student engagement, it's all the hard work of teachers and administrators, so we're very proud of that. I was able to attend all of the safety drills, and I've done that now for years and years and years, and I have to say that our students know what to do. And it's eerily quiet and dark, and it kind of takes your breath away to see the school in that state, and luckily it only lasts for just a couple minutes, so thanks for everyone for taking that so seriously. I wanted to remind people that winter break is coming up. It's December 20th to January 1st, and so staff and students should return on January 2nd. So just a reminder to everyone. And attached, you also see the recreation report for the month, and also the complete program guide, so that you can see all the things that the recreation program is offering for the next session.
Okay. Any questions? Do we have any community input?
We do not.
Right? We do not. Moving on to the consent agenda. Let me read what's on the consent agenda. Approval of November 11th, Regular Board of Education Meeting Minutes. Approval of November 11th Finance Committee Proceedings. Approval of vouchers and invoices. Approval of December 5th Facilities Committee. Approval of Treasury Report. Approval of support staff resignations. Approval of co-curricular letter of resignation. Approval of support staff letters of assignment. Approval of support staff letters of assignment. Approval of co-curricular letter of assignment. Approval of early graduation request. Does anyone want to pull something out of there at this point? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Can we have roll call on that, please?
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert Temprio.
Aye.
David Radell.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Moving on to the action items. Approval of Wisconsin School Consulting LLC withdrawal of district administrative search.
I move the board accept the withdrawal from Wisconsin School Consulting LLC for the district administrative search. Second.
Moving and seconded to approve the withdrawal. Could we have roll call, please?
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert Temprio.
Aye.
David Radell.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of professional staff resignations.
We have two resignations this month. One is for Cam Derry, the high school chemistry and biology teacher. One is for Cam Derry, the high school chemistry and biology teacher, and the second is for Ms. Katie Burton. I have some notes there that you can see regarding some background information on each of them.
I move the board approve the professional staff resignations of Mr. Cam Derry, high school science teacher, and Ms. Katie Burton, elementary school special education teacher.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resignation of these two staff members. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Robert Temprio?
Aye.
David Radel?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of professional staff contracts for the 1920 school year.
Actually, they're right now.
Pardon?
They're right now. These...
1920, or the 2019-2020 school year, yeah.
So first of all, Mr. Bobby Rose had been a long-term sub for us last year, and he was the successful candidate for the social studies and communications teacher opening that we had. And then, in a really strange twist of fate, Kayla Thomas, who had been a very successful special education teacher with us for the elementary school, has relocated back to Wisconsin and actually approached us about the possibility of returning at almost the same time that we, we learned of the need for the elementary special ed teacher to resign. So we're very thrilled with each of these people returning to the district for us.
Motion, please.
I move the board...
Go ahead, sorry.
I move the board approve the professional staff contracts to Mr. Robert Rose, high school social studies communications teacher, and Kayla Thomas, elementary school special education teacher, and welcome them to the district.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the staff contracts. Any questions? Roll call, please.
David Radel?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Temprio?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of gifts. Mr. Radel?
Yep. I move the board accept the following gifts, and thank the generous donors for their continued support of the students and programs of the Lake Mills Area School District. An anonymous donation of $100 to the middle school's school store, a $200 donation from the friends of the LD Fargo Library to the elementary school's Talk, Read, Play program, a $250 donation from Jaclyn and John Quinn to the elementary school's PTO, and a $375 donation from the Lake Mills Rotary to the high school's Interact Club, a $500 grant from ExxonMobil to Lake Mills High School.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve these generous gifts. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Temprio?
Aye.
David Radel?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Upcoming board agenda items for January.
First of all, I wanted to remind you that you have a special board meeting on January 8th at 4:30 in the district office. I believe that's related to the search, and then I would just like to add a closed session. There's a employment issue that I'd like to talk with you about, and...
On that date, or the next?
On that date, it'll just take a few minutes.
Okay.
And then on January 13th, we'll have our regular meeting, and at that time, we'll have the presentation of the audit report, and at that time, we will also discuss our open enrollment, space availability, and fingers crossed, we'll have a new professional staff contract for your approval.
Good. Anything else anybody can think of? Motion to adjourn then.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Close. We are adjourned.